Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome everyone to the 2019 Final Commissioners Meeting of the 2019 year. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone to please stand for the pledge. Could George Atkinson please come up to the podium? George Atkinson is an Army Vet, and he spent two years abroad in Germany. George, thank you for your service, and thank you for all the great work that you do in Lackawanna County on behalf of veterans. And I know this is something that you care for so much, just like the rest of us do. But thank you for your service, and thank you for caring for veterans. The floor is yours.
Okay. If you want to join us, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Excuse me. Can we have a moment of silence for our men and women fighting, you know, to give us a good Christmas and a new year?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, George. Please, everyone, save your...
One minute, please. Could my wife come up and say something?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think my mother's drunk.
My owner.
Thank you for the minute. I wanted to say we wouldn't miss being here for your last meeting, Patrick. You've been inspirational through everything that we do for veterans, and you've been a constant supporter and cheerleader for us. Thank you. And I just have a little parting gift for you if you would accept it.
Absolutely. Thanks.
That's sweet.
Thank you, guys. Keep in touch. It's going up this year, okay?
Thanks.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Thank you, all commissioners. Thank you.
We have a moment of silence for Nassau Bay Police Department, Texas. Sergeant Keela Sullivan was killed when she was intentionally struck by a vehicle driven by, driven while attempting to arrest the wanted subject, suspect. Pandalo County Constable's office, Mississippi. Constable Ray Hawkins was killed when his vehicle was struck by a stolen pickup truck being pursued. Deputy Chief Vincent DiMarino died a result of cancer he developed following his assignment for the search and recovery efforts at the World Trade Center site following the 2001 attack in 9/11, New York City Police Department, New York. Colorado Department of Corrections, Colorado. Sergeant Joshua Vouth was killed when a boiler exploded in the Fremont Correctional Facility. Huntsville Police Department, Alabama. Agent Bill Clotter was shot and killed while participating in a narcotics operation sting. Houston Police Department, Texas. Sergeant Christopher Brewster was shot and killed while responding to a domestic assault. Officer Steven Carr was killed and shot, killed in an unprovoked attack as he sat in his patrol car. Fayetteville Police Department, Arkansas. Please keep our first responders and our thoughts and prayers and their families at this time in need. And then, last but absolutely not least, Kosher Supermarket Domestic Terrorism Shooting in Jersey City. Three citizens died. Mendel Fornes Mosch Detuch Miguel Rodriguez. Also, City Detective Joe Seals, a 15-year veteran, was also shot and killed. And I'd like to thank those great law enforcement officers who shot and killed the two assailants that caused this havoc. Please keep those heroes and their families and her thoughts and prayers. Just a moment of silence. Ladies and gentlemen, we've been doing a moment of silence every day for either our servicemen and women or our first responders since this administration started in January of 2016. And also, Mr. George Atkinson, who came to do the pledge, we've always made sure that we have a veteran to come in and do the pledge at every meeting, and we talk a little bit about their background, and then we have them recite our pledge. So, I'd like to thank George again for coming out today. I'd like to bring this Wednesday, December 18th, 10:00 a.m., Commissioners Conference Room meeting to order at 123 Wyoming Avenue at the Lackawanna County Government Center at the Globe. Can I have a motion for the approval of minutes?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation presentations, 19-0337. Commissioner Cummings, you are up.
Vincent, Vincenzo's Pizzeria. Who's here from Vincenzo's? Vince. Come on up to the podium and tell us about your business.
Hello, my name is Vincenzo Seco. I've had a business here, and I'm just celebrating my 30th year.
Oh, wow.
We're located on 131 North Main Avenue, West Granton. Yeah, so, just proud to be here.
We're happy to have you here today.
What made you start your business, and how did you get involved in that?
I started early at the age of 19.
19?
Yeah, so...
And you're from the area?
I'm from West Granton.
Where'd you grow up?
Born and raised in West Granton. Grew up on Watson Street, in the San Diegan's area.
Watson Street?
Yeah.
Really? So you just woke up one day and said, "I'm gonna open a pizza shop"?
No, I worked for my uncle Luigi all through high school at his restaurant, so, went to college, didn't turn out the way I expected, and I decided to invest in a business, give it a shot, and here I am 30 years later.
Fast 30 years.
Yeah, fast 30 years.
Well, and the reason that I asked the questions and I, you know, asked for this business spotlight was because of people like you, because whether you realize it or not, you're an inspiration to those that are coming up now. So, thank you so much for proving that you can go and start your own, I'm assuming, just pizza shop.
Yes, because, oh, we have a pizza restaurant. Yeah, we've grown through the years. We're able to purchase the building next door and grow from 30 seats to over 100, and we have a 60-seat banquet room.
That's what I was looking for.
Yeah. Yeah, so...
So, you went from...
A lot of hard work and commitment, sacrificing my family. Here we are.
Well, and that's what it's about, and that's true economic development in our neighborhoods and in our area, and I thank you so much for having the courage to go ahead and do that on your own, I'm assuming. Did you just do this by yourself or your family?
By myself, yeah. Oh, on my own.
At 19 years old?
At 19. Yeah. I look back now, I see my youngest is 19 now, and I don't even imagine how I did it, but...
But you did.
But I did.
And...
And I encourage the young kids that work for me the same way, to start something and go, just keep growing with it.
Right, and that's exactly what people like yourself do in our area, and there's so many that are like you, and I just wanted to make sure that the community was aware of how you got to where you are, what made you do it, so that other people can look to you for inspiration and courage to do the same thing in their own fields. So, thank you very much. Very proud to have you here.
Thank you for having me here.
Congratulations. You are, you started as a small shop, and now you have a banquet room, you've grown, and that's exactly what it's all about, and that's, you're providing jobs to the community. I know we had Pat Revillo in here and all the shops down in Wolfridge, most of them came in, but, you know, I'm sure that you work with the kids, and there are scheduling, and your flexible hours, just like other area businesses that are locally owned do, which you don't find in the big conglomerates, you know?
Right.
And, you know, that's what makes you special as well. So, thank you so much for providing employment, for helping kids to be able to pay for college tuition, and to further their education in whatever way that they had planned, and providing them the opportunity to learn how to be effective in a job, show up for a job, do the job, and become the person that they are today. You've, you're a testament to our community, and that's proven through the 30 years of your service as a small business owner in Lackawanna County, and I can't say enough about how proud I am to see you here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for recognizing that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thanks. I'd like to wish Pat good luck in your future.
Thanks, Vince.
All right, thank you.
Stay there. Commissioner Nino Tarianni.
Congratulations, and it's a nice restaurant with great food. I get over there for lunch pretty regularly.
Thank you. I know that. Thank you. Appreciate it.
It's a great place. Thank you.
Well, we graduated 1988 from West Granton, the two of us, and he's definitely the first person of our class that had his own business by 1989, and he's always there. I mean, that's how you make a business like this grow. He's hands-on. He really is. His food's second to none. It's like a hallmark on Main Street and West Side. Vince, the address, if anybody wants to come, where is that?
131 North Main Avenue.
Phone number, what's the phone number if somebody wants to order pizza because they don't have time to sit down?
347-1060.
But I mean, to anyone in the viewing audience, you know, I mean, Vince came out of high school, and at 19, he owned his own business. You know, was there a lot of work? Absolutely, there was a ton of work. And the way that I'm sure that he saved money was doing most of the work himself.
Right.
So, you know, if you're young, you're innovative, and you have heart and desire, you can make things happen if you really want to.
Takes like the owner, like reinvesting in the business.
Yeah.
I don't see enough of that.
You added a section. It was just a pizza place, then he added a whole dining section to it.
Right.
It's really, really nice, and it really matters. The Main Street and West Side, like I said, you're like one of the hallmarks that's on Main Street and West Side. So, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And anyone, please, make sure you make it down to have some pizza at his pizza parlor. It's one of the best places around. Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Your best.
Thank you very much.
So, today I offer a certificate of recognition. The County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Vincenzo's Pizzeria in honor of achieving the designation of a small business spotlight in Lackawanna County given this 18th day of December 2019 by Commissioner Patrick O'Malley, Commissioner Jerry Natariani, and myself, Lorraine Cummings. Come on up.
Oh, Vince, one second, real quick. What's the phone number? Somebody wants to call and order pizza? Great. Thank you.
Congratulations. You know, excellent job.
Thanks for being a friend. Absolutely. Absolutely. Take a picture. He looks much younger, doesn't he?
Everybody smile. Take a couple here. Two more.
Is this your family here?
Yes.
Oh, it's your family. Come on up. Absolutely. You know, this, this is absolutely what it's about right here, your family being involved. And I know the kids, you know, there's some days that dad asks you to help, and I know you want to, and you do it because dad asks you to, right? I deal with that with my sons every day.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Very, very proud of you. Very proud of you, Dad. You helping out?
Congratulations.
Glad to carry on the tradition.
Congratulations. Jeez, that's super cold. That's what I'm hearing.
No.
Cheers. There you go.
Sorry.
Ready? Okay, here we go. Everybody smile. Very good. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. It's so nice to have you.
Thanks, boss. Thank you. Appreciate it for a good... No, absolutely. Gary, would you like to say a few words about Vincenzo's Pizza?
Well, they're a staple in West Granton. Wouldn't be, Main Avenue wouldn't be the same without them.
You're absolutely right. I figured you'd want to say a few words. Me too. Okay, 19-388. Good works in Lackawanna County. Jim Moran. It's Jim Moran here. Jim, come on up to the podium. I've known Jim Moran since I was 14 years old. There's a picture of Jim Moran, and we're getting medals up at the Moscow Country Fair. Was that 1.8 mile run, that one?
1.8, and then they had a 5.2 mile.
And you, you weighed probably about a buck forty-five, about 145 pounds, and I weighed about 120. That was a while ago.
Oh, it's a long time ago.
But, um...
Well, this young, this young man made the pizza, somebody else ate the pizza.
He just carbs up the right way before he works out, not like us, before you go to bed. But Jimmy has been involved with SOAR, Scranton Organized Area Runners, which took care of all the running needs in the community for decades. All the SOAR races, most of them all were, they were all, it went on to be donations for different charities, and he's just been involved with so many races, and he does the affiliate, he does the actual timing, and at the end of a race, if you have somebody that knows how to time the right way, and they make sure that people are in their age groups the right way, it's, it's a tough job, and he makes sure it gets done properly. And I really mean it. He's done my father's race for the last, jeez, it's gonna be 28 years this year. And, but all the races in our community, and he also has been going to Boston for probably decades, and he was there when the tragedy struck in Boston, too. He's been around a long time, and he's given so much of himself to the community, especially to the health and well-being and to the Green Ridge Mile. He's been helping with the Green Ridge Mile probably since that started, too, right?
I used to have the good fortune of running it, and then I went on to the management side.
Well, the mile, I know you can still do the mile. You'd be okay. Just gotta do it slower.
Definitely a little slower.
So, what's your thoughts, Jimmy? Would you like to...
Well, like I said, I was a runner in high school, I was a runner in college. I got involved in running in Lackawanna. I moved here in 1978, and I got involved in running, and then 1983, I got involved with SOAR, and, you know, I, I, there was a lot of people that were involved back then, and I started working, writing a little newsletter, all right, help with this race, help with this race.
How about the newsletter?
What?
I forgot about the newsletter.
Oh, yeah. And, you know, and then, you know, we tried to, you know, inform, you know, everybody through a newsletter what was going on, a schedule, and write little stories about, you know, who won what race, and I don't wanna go through too much of that. So, I write the newsletter, and somebody made a wrong turn at the Wompa Pack at a Father Leonard leads the flock astray at the, at the, at the tung, at the, at the Wompa Pack 10K race, 'cause he missed the market.
He probably turned around and went back and went anyway, did he?
Wait, it was the, by the time the newsletter went out, that's when he retired. You didn't know, there's no internet, you know, back then, but we had a lot of fun, and, you know, I continued my racing career, and like I said, it was just, you know, there was a lot of people that helped me, you know, during that time, and, you know, we've gone on to, you know, more commercial, you know, timing and scoring, and most of the officials that I work with have retired, but, you know, it's been a lot of fun, and it's led me in a Forrest Gump-type of way to get involved in Boston, to get involved in Niagara Falls International Marathon, and, and the Utica Boilermaker, and, you know, out of the area, and in the Wilkes-Barre area. So, I still continue, you know, to do it, but it's, it's, it's just been, it's been a lot of fun, you know, and running has been a passion of mine when, you know, and so I'm glad I could, you know, help officiate and continue my career.
Let's talk about, well, my favorite place, when I see at the Finish Line at Steamtown. He's the director of the, he actually runs the Finish Line at Steamtown. 20, 24 years later, I'm not sure, maybe I'm asking a question, it might not be the answer. What is it approximately St. Charles has received?
1.6, 1.9 million miles over, you know, a million dollars over, over 24 years.
Isn't that incredible?
But...
It started with, it started with the marathon, it was 600 people up in Forest City, and it's grown as big as up to 2,800.
Yeah.
That is amazing, Jimmy.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And like you said, all those people get their dreams, I mean, a lot of people have the marathon as a bucket list thing.
Yeah.
And, you know, when they come, how, what kind of expression, like, I know they're paying, but how about the expression when they finish? Isn't that the greatest thing?
Oh, oh, it's tremendous.
Total drubulation. It's amazing.
Oh, yeah.
For some, for somebody like me, I'm just happy to finish.
I think we all are at this stage.
Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you so much. I'm proud to have you here. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Natariani.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Okay, we have a certificate of recognition. The County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Jim Moran in honoring of achieving a designation as individual, our group providing great works in Lackawanna County. Would you like to come forward?
(applause) Smile. Couple. One more. Very good. Thank you.
Congratulations, Jimmy. Thanks. Bob Colra from McDonald's and the Ronald McDonald House. Bob, would you like to come up? Always, then. Wait a minute. Let's have Rich Bradshaw come up with you. Rich, I'd like for you to say a few words first. I've known Bob for decades, and from my, and I never really talked about the holiday events and stuff that my family puts on. Bob was one of the first people who helped out with all of our holiday events, every time, from McDonald's. He was the manager at McDonald's. He worked at McDonald's from when he was a teenager, went to college, came back, became manager of McDonald's on Kaiser Avenue. Staff loved him, the most efficient, efficient McDonald's there was. If you went through there, it was quick, speedy and fast, but Bob always cared about the community, and he gave so much back, and even in his retirement years now, he still gives so much back. And that's where I'd like to bring Rich Bradshaw in. Rich?
Well, it's a pleasure to be here today, and it's a pleasure to speak to one of my first bosses when I was a young man, a teenager, and...
Didn't know that one.
We call him Mr. K still. I'm a 45-year-old man, and he's Mr. K. So, but, but many things. Grateful for Vincenzo's, great, great business. We know Jimmy Moran a long time. He's been timing the Ronald McDonald House race for decades, and we're grateful for his work.
Forgot about that, actually.
And, and so today's a great day for me, so I want to say thanks to Mr. K for his good works in the community, because he really is an amazing fella. We honored him with a lifetime achievement award just a few years back, and it was definitely, definitely deserved. He has done so much for the Ronald McDonald House. He has been a founding member of the Ronald McDonald House. We are here 33 years, providing a home away from home for families who have seriously ill children in the hospital. We started in a half a double of a house in those very humble beginnings, and then we've expanded, and then we've expanded again, and now we're in four hospitals and moving into a fifth, and here we go. Mr. K has been there the whole way. He is an honorable man. He is a wonderful teacher, and I appreciate all that he's done for me, bringing me up as I've learned how to manage a crew and move on and be a director of a wonderful children's charity. As someone who has stayed at a Ronald McDonald House as a seven-year-old boy, and as a father who has had twins in the NICU and needed to use the Ronald McDonald Family Room, I am proud of our founding members, and I am proud of Robert Colra, my friend. He's a good man, and you did well today honoring him for his good works. He's a wonderful guy.
That was awesome.
Congratulations.
(applause). Can you tell that Rich actually...
How about that? Did he get you or what?
Yeah, he got me good, but can you tell that every Sunday he gets people to say amen?
I bet. I was about to say amen just now.
On Delaware Avenue.
Yeah.
He really does. I'd just like to say thank you for the award, and it's just been an honor and privilege. McDonald's Kaiser Avenue, that was probably one of the last ones in the country that actually was a red and white.
Yeah, it was.
And one night, this, this bunch of guys come up, and they had been down at Steamtown. It was 1970. They actually came up at 12 o'clock at night, had been down to Steamtown, put the, took pictures there, and actually took pictures up at Kaiser Avenue, and it was all like the 50s and 60s, and it ended up on a historical site, and I, every so often I see it, or you can view it when you go onto, I think the website is scranton.com, northeastern pennsylvania.com, and the history of, it's really neat. McDonald's Kaiser Avenue, it's been a great life, and probably the greatest things I could tell you is that seeing the kids come back after the, it's a first shop, and they, and one thing that they, they do is they come back, when you see them, they grow. Some went away to college and came back on Christmas and stuff like that to work, but over the years, I can't, there's thousands of people that have gone through there, and thousands of people that have gone by that arch, and it's just been a great, great thing. And be able to put something back through the Ronald House, I think, Rich, how many Ronald Houses are there in Scranton, or in the United States?
In the United States, there's 186. There's about 360 around the world, and there's certain millions of families. Started very humbly in Philadelphia, and it's grown to span in the 1986, and here we are.
186 Ronald Houses. Think about that, and we have one in Scranton. It's pretty neat.
Yeah. How about the impact? The impact those houses have?
The impact is phenomenal, and to see people come, we've, we've had people from Great Britain, all over the world, and it's just amazing to see them, you know, see them come back, and we have a picnic in, at Roba's in the fall, and a race, Pat, naturally a race. Every year, you're Mr. Racer. And we go up there, and to see the little kids come back, they're, Neil, no, maybe a pound or two, and see them come back year after year and see them grow, it's just a wonderful thing, and I thank, thank God for an opportunity to put something back in this area. Thank you.
Great job. Commissioner Cummings?
I've had the opportunity to, well, not opportunity, but I've had to use the Ronald McDonald House myself with my children and Hershey, so I know exactly all the services you provide. It's wonderful, and I met so many families there that, you know, I kind of felt guilty that I was there, that they were so, from out of town, had nothing, you know, and they had to stay there, they had to leave their jobs and everything to take care of their kids, and you provided house and food and everything for them, so it's a wonderful community project that you started and, or that you helped to implement and that you work on, and thank you to, I'm sorry, Rich.
It's amazing when you think about the cost it would be to go to Philadelphia and stay in Philadelphia, or stay at a hotel in Philly, or to eat in Philly.
Just driving back and forth and gas costs alone on a daily basis is, is a tax, it's taxing. It's stressful, and, and there's money involved, and you're looking for hotels, and, you know, thank God the hospitals do help out with some of the costs to the hotels sometimes, especially in Hershey, but, you know, the, the services that are provided with Ronald McDonald House, gratitude could never extend. That's not even a good enough word for me to extend to them, how much I appreciate the work that they've done and your work, so thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
I'm so proud to have you here, and congratulations, and you're certainly worthy of more than just a good work certificate, I hope. I wish you nothing but a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and so happy to have you.
And many more.
Yes, and many, many more. Thank you.
Commissioner Natariani?
I've known Bob all my adult life. His mother's a wonderful person, that's how he is, how he is. He's generous and hardworking. We work together at a church picnic every summer. He's a great guy, and there's, there's no, no stopping him.
and, and there's money involved and you're looking for hotels and, you know, thank God the hospitals do help out with some of the cost to the hotels sometimes, especially in Hershey. But um, you, you know, the, the services that are provided with Ronald McDonald House, uh, gratitude could never extend. That's not even a good enough word for me to extend to them, how much I appreciate the work that they've done and your work. So, thank you very, very much. I'm so proud to have you here and congratulations and you're certainly uh, worthy of, of more than just a good work certificate, I hope. Uh, I wish you nothing but a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and uh, so happy to have you.
And many more.
Yes, and many, many more. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
I've uh, known Bob all my adult life. Uh, his, his mother's a wonderful person. That's how he is, how he is. Uh, he's generous and hardworking. We worked together at a church picnic every summer. He's a, a great guy and there's, there's no, no stopping him. He just keeps going and uh, thank you for everything you've done for the, the community, sir.
Thank you for the kind words, Drew.
Um, years and years ago, um, Bob had a bout with an illness. I'm not going to get into the illness, but it was a type of thing that would put somebody on their butt. He was at work every single day. He tried, he was there to make it happen. And um, I didn't realize that Rich Bradshaw worked for you, but all those students and adults that have worked through you that you've had an impact on you and they all love you. Cause I remember you retired, every, they were thrilled to, to thank you for all the things that you helped or the inspiration that you gave them. It really matters and um, to think of all those children out of the NIC unit that you had an opportunity to help by being who you are and helping with the Ronald McDonald House.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Bob. Thank you for everything that you do. We have a certificate of recognition. The County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Bob Colra in honoring of achieving a designation as an individual, group, individual or group providing great works in Lackawanna County. Come forward. Oh, I love the tie. Wait one second, bring Rich up. Rich, come on up here.
No, 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 it's his day.
Come on, Rich, I know he wants you up here. I can tell. You see, look at his eyes. You really, you threw him off, didn't you?
That's pretty funny.
So, we know we're getting the whole body.
Thank you.
Those are, yes.
And here we go, smile. Ready? Couple. Very good. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
That was great. Thank you so much for...
I didn't realize you weren't there. Nineteen dash zero three four zero, Good Works Lackawanna County Presentation, Presentation, Protective Services Team. Jason, what's up?
Good morning.
Good morning to you.
We talk about protective services here quite a bit. Um, we, we bring contracts, we talk about forensic accountants, but we were fortunate this year to be honored by the Secretary of Aging, um, for our work as a protective service team. And, and I just wanted to take a minute out of everyone's day and to, to recognize the folks that are really the boots on the ground that spend all of their time every day of the week protecting our older adults in our community. These are the folks that do the investigations. We, we, you know, we're only talking about uh, two out of every fifty investigations that make their way over to the District Attorney's Office. These folks are still doing twenty, thirty, forty investigations sometimes at a time um, and no one's really realizing all these numbers that are coming through our office. Last year, these folks did over six hundred investigations themselves um, to, to try and protect the older adults in our community. So, um, I'm very proud of them as a team. I'm very proud of all the work that they do every day for us. Their, their loyalty is undying to our older adults. Um, they, they, they have made us all very proud and it, it is an accomplishment for our county to be the first county recognized as a team as opposed to um, what the secretary traditionally did, which was to recognize an individual. So, I just wanted to just take a moment and, and thank them for all their hard work for us and they're with us today.
Thank you for being here. Commissioner Cummings?
Uh, thank you uh, for, for coming up today and thank you all for being here today and thank you for all of your work. Really appreciate it.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
It's a great job your group does, Jason, and thank you for everything.
You guys received an award from the, from Pennsylvania Department of Aging Secretary, Award of Excellence, for Excellence. Protecting our elderly. It matters so much inside of our community and sometimes, you know, I mean, it's horrible to say you're protecting them from their own loved ones. You know, and, and they need this help and you're there to keep them in their homes, keep them alive and keep them safe. And a lot of them are veterans, our own heroes. So, I'd like to personally thank all of you for what you do. It's really God's work. I know it's not easy. It's, it's not an easy job, but thank you for what you do day in and day out. And uh, Jason, thank you to you because, I mean, you're the head of the department and you know, you make it a great department, but you have great workers there that really care about our citizens and that really matters to all of us. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a certificate of recognition. The County, County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Lackawanna County Protective Service Team in honor of achieving a, an award in excellence in protective service given December eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen. If you could all come to, would you like, let's, would anybody like to say a few words? That's all right. If you'd like, anyone, anyone like to say a few words?
I'll just say I'm very proud of everybody I work with. Um, it's been a very challenging and hard year because unfortunately the number of our investigations has significantly increased over the last five years. And to see everybody working together every day, it, it's, it's amazing because what they do is really hard and we've created a system that's been recognized by the state now and it's working for us and I'm really proud of them all.
How much has the opioid crisis affected your job?
It's definitely impacted our work. Um, we're, what we're trying to do is get the data to prove how much it's impacted our work.
Yeah, I'd like to, I know we're, you said you were going to work on that, but I'd like to get those numbers.
It, it, it's difficult because, you know, a lot of the opioid issues come for, you know, like medical theft, uh, people stealing other people's medication and, and things like that. So, those things run rampant. They're running through our office every week. So, it, getting, getting that data and collecting that data is important. Um, we really wish we would get some assistance from the state to, to help us keep that data in line so that it's easy to report out on.
I'm wondering if you can um, work together with the DA's office that just received a grant, uh, to try and help because that's going to be looking at data for um, the impact of the opioid crisis. So, maybe you could talk to DA Powell about that and see if there's some way you can help in that.
We definitely will. We, we work very closely with them, with our multidisciplinary team now.
Yeah.
But I think that's just an expansion of the work we currently do. That'd be, that, that's a great idea. Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you for your work and, you know, I know that um, we have a lot of grandparents out there um, that are really trying hard to help their grandchildren and um, you know, I um, I see successes and I see failures, but I, I thank you for the work you're doing because um, I've seen it, you know, throughout the county and in my own family. So, I truly do appreciate the work that you're all doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to come forward? Your first words, if we please, congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you so very much. I do appreciate it.
Congratulations.
They're going to set us up here.
Jason, I'm going to move it half a step, just you that way. Everybody else stay the same. Here we go, everybody look here, smile. Take a couple. Any to smile. One more.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Okay, nineteen dash zero three four one. Good Works Lackawanna County Presentation to Cigna Adopt an Angel Program.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm a representative of Lackawanna County Office of Youth and Family Services and I organize the Adopt an Angel Program. Um, every year we rely on the community for donations to give to our children who are either in foster care or in, in home who have open cases with the agency. This year we have sponsored four hundred and seventy children. Um, what we do is not only one gift per child, but we fulfill wish lists for their entire wish list for Christmas. So, they get a full Christmas from all of the sponsors. Um, this entire program is run on donations from the community. And we wanted to um, to talk about Cigna. Cigna, Cigna has been participating in our program for sixteen years. Um, for thirteen years it has been organized by Catherine Leonard Nixon, who is here with us today. Um, she brought with her Leslie Stalica, who is the Cigna Community Activity Committee Director and Joy Sarachi, who is a Cigna Site Leader. Um, this year was their largest year of participation. They had sponsored ninety children. When they delivered their gifts, they have filled up our entire lobby downstairs. It was one of the most wonderful things I have ever seen. Um, they have sponsored, in the last thirteen years with Catherine at the helm of this, they have sponsored uh, seven hundred and fifty angels for us. So, it's really amazing what they have done for our community and the children of Lackawanna County and we couldn't do it without them.
Great job. Commissioner Cummings? Would you like to bring some of them up? Bring them up to the podium? Thank you. Thanks for being here today.
Thank you for having us.
Would you like to say a few words?
Not personally.
He just tells your names.
This program truly brings Catherine to tears every year. She single-handedly coordinates our entire office, sending out all of the handwritten letters um, that come from the children in our community and somehow pulls together that we can fulfill the wish list of so many kids every year. Brings her to tears.
Very nice. Commissioner Cummings?
Thank you so much for the work that you're doing. So appreciative of it and I'm glad to honor you today with this Good Work Certificate.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Thank you again for all your work and uh, it, it's, it is important and it's a great thing to do. Thank you.
Catherine, I, I came downstairs when they said the trucks pulled up. I, I couldn't believe bikes and dolls and toys. You, you couldn't believe... Like our reception area is big downstairs, a big reception area. It was full, full of bags that were overloaded and toys. And you know, could you imagine being a child on Christmas Day? You're waiting for Santa Claus, you're waiting for something to be at your house and there's nothing there? Well, thanks to Catherine and, and our, our, our employees, our workers at CYS, making sure that these dreams are completed. That they have a, a great Christmas, that they get that toy that they asked for. Cause it's one thing to give someone a toy, that's great. But to actually give them something that they literally wanted, I mean, that's, that's that sparkle that's in every child's eyes. It really is. And to see all those toys downstairs that you guys are going to distribute, it was amazing. And I think that was about two weeks ago. So, when I found out, I, I wanted to bring all of you in here and especially you for what you do every year. And I could see it, you were tearing up because it really matters, you know? Like we just had area aging in here, you know, protecting our senior citizens. They got an award for doing that. And children, youth, oh, their job is angels' works. You know what I mean? Like, see, I mean, I know the deal, the situation they deal with going into these households and I, I'd like to thank them. CYS, thank you for what you do, protecting our children and making sure they live in an environment that's safe. Thank you. But making sure that they have a great Christmas, that's a memory that'll last a lifetime for them. Cause everybody remembers that certain toy on a certain Christmas that you really wanted and to actually get it from a, a letter to Santa, that means the world. So, congratulations. We have a certificate of recognition. The County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Catherine Nixon in honor of achieving a designation as an individual or group providing great works in Lackawanna County. Would you like to come forward? Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Great job. It's yours.
All right, that looks good. Here we go, everybody standing, smile. Take a couple. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you. You know, um, that's what this, this part of the meeting's about. Like you might watch other meetings and, nothing against their other meetings, you know what I mean? They're, it's government, I get it. But county government, we've always tried to make sure we recognize our citizens that do great work in Lackawanna County and um, and businesses. And that's due to the fact that Commissioner Cummings brought that up. These businesses have been coming in since January of two thousand and sixteen, talking about their website, talking about their phone number, talking about where they're at. Commissioner, this was yours and it really matters and has such a great impact. And then we have to reach out to economic development to try to help them with maybe um, some equipment or a front lift, a facial front lift to the front of their building, you name it. Commissioner Cummings?
Um, on, on the Small Business Spotlight, you want me to talk about? Well, you know, as a small business owner, um, and as someone who worked at the Chamber, I was a, I was on the Board of Directors for the Chamber of Commerce. Um, I always felt that the people that I met out in the community were amazing people that needed to be recognized more than they ever are. And um, all you hear in the papers, let's bring in these big, you know, companies into our area. Well, we have big companies in our area. We have big people in our area that are huge, that are, have, have put their heart and soul into a business uh, from nineteen years old or in my case at, you know, thirty-two years old with a hundred and sixty-four dollars left over from my income tax return check. You know, I mean, it's, and, and, you know, they don't realize what you do prior to that decision. It's, it took me five years to decide to do that. Um, you know, uh, other people, as we have shown here today and other days on numerous occasions, just thought, you know what? I'm going to do this. I'm just going to do this. This is what I'm going to do. And they've, they've been in business for their entire life since then. And their family, they provided a, a stable uh, life for their family, paid for their homes, paid for their children's education, paid for other uh, family members' kids to have jobs and learn how to, what it is to be a responsible worker. Uh, and they went on to either start their own business or do something uh, in the same field or come back to where they were. Uh, even, we had a few people that came back after college. They were working in a shops that they started out at and they decided they didn't want to do what they went to college for. They wanted to go back to where they were working and then they literally took that business over. Um, one of my mentors that I, I always talk about is uh, uh, Phyllis Michelle from Old Forge. Uh, she's the owner of Anthony's. Um, you know, she was a waitress there and uh, she went on to be the cook and now she's the owner. And she's just an amazing woman. Uh, she's been, you know, someone that I look up to over the years and I just wanted to make sure that if we're going to talk about the Small Business Spotlight, I'd talk about that. Now, are we just talking about the Small Business Spotlight or are we talking about the accomplishments?
No, that's Small Business.
Small Business Spotlight. Okay. Um, so, you know, and I want to thank both Commissioner O'Malley and Commissioner O'Terriani. Thank you for your support and uh, vote on the Small Business Spotlight when I did uh, talk about that. I do really appreciate that, um, more than you know, because I think we've seen um, people come in that truly have inspired others and, including us. I think that we didn't even know their story, their background or why they did what they did. So, so very proud to honor the small businesses across Lackawanna County and I hope it continues once I'm gone. Thank you, Commissioner.
Absolutely. Um, just wanted to make sure real quick, it's our last meeting. We want to just talk about, this is just some of the achievements and accomplishments that happened in the last four years. Right off the bat, you know, I mean, our motto, investing in our future Lackawanna County. That's where it all started. And then after that, I mean, they're not in numerical order, but they are all different accomplishments. Um, first ever Sammy Heenan Addiction Awareness Rally at the Lackawanna County Courthouse. Getting addiction out of the shadows and out of the dark. And we would like to thank the Heenan family for that. They really, the Heenan family, they had a daughter who was beautiful, who died, who's definitely an angel to those that have addiction. And they came to us and asked to be able to utilize the courthouse. You never heard of anything like this. Every year since she died. And um, the first one actually they had, there was an individual was there who was strung out and they got him into a rehab that day. So, Commissioner, anything you'd like to add to that?
The Heenan's?
Yeah.
Um, well, yeah, they came in after we, I spoke at that uh, the graduation. And their, their, you know, what was it, like not even three weeks after their daughter passed? You know, that's an amazing story right there. So, very proud of, to know them and help them in any way I can.
This administration also created the Lackawanna County Land Bank. Some administration had to do it. The city of Scranton couldn't afford to do it and we had an opportunity to start a land bank. And to date, we have a hundred and twenty-five properties back on the tax roll, no liens, no issues. And lots to come in. And we're up to five municipalities at this point. So, any municipality would like to get involved, the land bank helps to get rid of blight. And it gets the property to you that you need or you want to either be a side lot or for your business. So, there's options for everyone. Also, we lobbied Harrisburg against the closure of SCI Waymart. We would have lost three hundred jobs in Waymart. Went to Harrisburg, we had a rally at their courthouse to keep those jobs in Lackawanna County, cause the impact would have been immense. It wouldn't have just been those citizens. It would have been all the businesses around the jail and everything else, the prison when it closed down. SCI Waymart is alive and well and those citizens are still working. We've had eight audits consecutively done on time. This is something that a lot of local municipalities are not capable of doing. We've been doing it for the last eight years, making sure of this. When we got our A-stable bond rating, which meant the world to Lackawanna County Government, to be able to do a lot of great work and finance, our finances, we turned out and we refinanced several bonds, which saved nearly thirty million dollars on behalf of the citizens of Lackawanna County. Since two thousand and thirteen, we've awarded two hundred and forty-seven community reinvestment grants. Two hundred and forty-seven. That's little leagues, that's community centers, that's uh, that's legions, that's VFWs, that's a little bit of everything. And these are all projects that just needed to get across the finish line. And these are all projects that just needed to get across the finish line. We, in reinvestment, spent, we invested or triggered eight million, one hundred ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars in public and private partnerships. That's what this delivered to Lackawanna County since 2013. We secured a long-term lease agreement with the New York Yankees, which ensures that baseball will stay in Lackawanna County till 2044. The impact, the economic impact, is, you can't even put a number on it, what it brings to our community, having the PNC field and our world champion rail riders there. It's such a draw. It's just such a great quality of life opportunity. And we actually have our Visitors Bureau Director here, who worked for the PNC at the, with the rail riders. And he'll tell you that that field and that team brings so much to Lackawanna County. And what would we have done if we wouldn't have kept baseball in Lackawanna County? We secured a long-term lease agreement, excuse me. We maintained upgrades in our county park system. As anybody's noticed, and we're starting to do all kinds of blacktopping throughout all of our four parks, there are four jewels of Lackawanna County. Ellsworth, Merly, Sonoski, Covington, and McDade Park. In the next year, there will be many, many upgrades from blacktop to equipment, you name it. And we did this last, past year in 2018. And we're just starting to do all the projects. So, there are some major upgrades coming to the commute, to the parks for the citizens and their quality of life. We designed and renovated and replaced county roads and bridges throughout Lackawanna County. Small bridges, roads. And we also just installed a large, or we're going to be installing within this next year, a large garage for our roads and bridges to be able to keep their equipment inside, to be able to work on it and get that out of the cold. We also provided award-winning arts and culture and education programs, including Arts in the Park, Arts Engage, and Wake Up with the Arts. If any of the citizens that are watching today's Commissioner's meeting understand that these are great opportunities to come out, enjoy our parks, free, have something to eat, do art with your children, and just having a great time in our parks. And go swimming. All of our swimming is free. We have three lakes and we have a beautiful pool at McDade Park. And on July 3rd, we have Lackawanna County Presents Scrantastic Spectacular down at the historical Lackawanna County Courthouse for all to come out. We have the Philharmonic to start all that off, starting at five o'clock. And at dusk, all of the fireworks begin. And it's just spectacular opportunities for all of our citizens to bring their families to sit on the grass at the courthouse and enjoy the spectacular fireworks display. We also conducted annual electronic and tire recycling collections. A lot of people got to realize, the electronics that we actually do these recycling for, we really don't have to. That's not part of being a county commissioner. It's actually up to your state officials, not us. We've been doing it. We're the ones that are making sure that we're not having TVs strewn around the roadways or tires stuck in gullies and stuff like that. We've been doing this for years. Because we got to make sure that Lackawanna County is as beautiful as it possibly can be. And this next one, I'm going to hand it right over to Commissioner Cummings. The Conservation District continued to preserve and protect. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, I do have my own list.
Oh, okay.
But if you want to do that list, you're certain, I didn't have anything to do with this list.
Okay, well, I'll go. Okay. I just had, we just had them all, just to line them up. Conservation continued to preserve and protect Lackawanna County farmlands and green spaces. I mean, that matters. We got to, you have to have clean water and you have to have clean soil to maintain life. We established an annual winter market, which brought thousands of people to downtown Scranton, the 100 block of Wyoming Avenue at the Globe. And this last year was another stupendous opportunity for our citizens to come out and really enjoy. Lackawanna County Government Center consolidation at the Globe. Two hundred and fifty-five thousand square feet paid for by our leases and rents that past administration have wasted millions of dollars on. And making sure that we had one-stop shopping. We went from thirteen locations, and some of our locations were as far out as voting registration on Stafford Avenue and domestic relations in Mayfield. And brought them to a block that was probably the most heavily-used block in the sixties, seventies, eighties, and nineties, to the most dormant. We could just about see tumbleweeds go down this street up until when we bought this building. This block is back because there's seven employees coming in every day. And all of our citizens are able to come here and do all their work with Lackawanna County Government. All of us have governments in all of our municipalities. But the one government in Lackawanna County that touches all citizens is Lackawanna County We eliminated a one million dollar surveillance fee. We had such bad bond ratings at one point that we literally had a one million dollar surveillance fee, just because, for them to keep an eye on what we were doing financially. That was eliminated. Eliminated, I think, in January of 2016. That's incredible savings for the citizens of Lackawanna County. And, sorry, really quick, just getting back to the Government Center. We were looking at doing a large, we're going to use bonds, actually, to pay for the Government Center. We decided to reach out to three local banks, three local banks that have citizens that are taxpayers, they're doing all the living and dying here in Lackawanna County. And they provided the monies for us to be able to do a mortgage on this building. Because the first year, when we took that loan, if we had taken bonds out, we would have paid a million dollars in interest back in the first year. Since we didn't use the bonds and we did it as a drawdown, we didn't pay one penny for the first nine months until we drew out the first twenty thousand dollars. We wanted to make sure that we were, keep up with our fiduciary responsibility and really be in the stewards of the citizens' money. We established the Lackawanna County Heritage Fair. Just happened in June of 2019. And it will be on the schedule for May and June of 2020. We installed a Unified Parcel Identifier Program. This locates and returns properties to the tax roll, something we really needed. We improved the capabilities of the 911 Center to help first responders. This was all done with grant money. This project took probably about six years and it came to fruition under this administration. And it saves seconds when your family's lives are in need of having the fire department, police department, EMT, you name it. And it really matters to our citizens. We also purchased our new home for Central Court on Wyoming Avenue, which will start the construction phase in the next couple of weeks. And that will be a new Central Court, which will provide security for the prison. And the inmates will never leave actually the jurisdiction of the prison. So, it will be much safer for the corrections officers and for the sheriff's deputies. We put reassessment on the ballot. We had our local newspapers say how bad we were, we're the devil, we gotta, we have to say, yeah, we're doing reassessment. Now, we understand as elected officials that we work on behalf of the citizens. But we wanted to make sure, because this was a different type of impact. There was the impact of the cost to do the actual reassessment. Then there was going to be the cost of what reassessment would do to the citizens. And we let the citizens make that decision. And they voted no. We were one of the first county to sue pharmaceutical companies over the opioid epidemic, which have torn the hearts out of families throughout Lackawanna County needlessly over the last four years. And if everything goes right, this administration, the next administration is going to reek the benefits of the monies we're going to receive. And we're going to help, they're going to help citizens that have addiction problems. We installed a uniform case management system. What this does is, we had the courts, we had the prison, and we had probation, and everybody was like on a different system. Now, when the courts go onto the system, they're looking at exactly what probation's looking at, exactly what the prison is. It's fast, it's effective, and it gets our citizens that may be doing time in prison back out on the streets. We moved the assessment appeals deadline to allow a better review of management of its cases. We also provided financial commitment. Oh, this was a big one. In 2000, in summer of 2017, we received a call from Children Youth Services, Bill Browning, that Valley View Estates up in the Blakely area did not have water. Valley View Estate is a trailer park. Numerous children that were from, sure, that were actually young citizens that children and youth were dealing with, lived inside of this trailer park. They shut the water off. We, as the government, heard about this. And we were on the phone that night. And that next morning, Pennsylvania American Water came out and made sure that Valley View Estates had water for these citizens to be able to use. They were dipping water in their pool to utilize their bathrooms. They had no options whatsoever. We got paid back for paying for the water. And Valley View Estates, the bills are all paid and they're, it's working as good as it could possibly be on behalf of the community. And it's just so much more, so much more. But these are just some of the achievements and accomplishments. Commissioner, anything you'd like to add or?
Well, I think that you've been here a lot longer, so, I mean, I'm only here four years. So, you had some additional stuff on your list that I wouldn't have taken credit for. So, we were given, you know, a good foundation from the previous administration to follow up on. My decisions that I made, well, I guess we'll find out which would have been better because I had the option of either or. So, you know, I was in a predicament when I first came in. I think both of my commissioners are good men who have good intentions for the people in different ways, just like I do. And, you know, reading through the list of what I wrote down and what you all wrote down is interesting because to see, it kind of shows the differences between philosophies when you look at that. And I come from more of the fiscal management side, and I'm always looking at that portion budgets. That's what I'm always concerned about is budgets. And one of the things that was not on this list, which I'm shocked by, is there was no tax increase.
Wow, yeah. Geez. Well, that's why I asked you, which ones?
That should have been the title. Because, you know, one thing that the citizens aren't aware of the fact that over the years, you know, we talk about the surplus that we have. We got the numbers in our budget hearings about how much surplus we've had over the past one, two, three, four, five years. So, in 2015, it was eight million. 2016, eleven million. 2017, when we did all those cuts, twenty-five million. 2018, nineteen million. And then this year, we're set to have a twenty-seven million dollar surplus with our deficit of six. And then our contributor, like, we might just get ninety-one percent in, so that brings it down to nineteen million. So, that's grown. And Commissioner Niteriani always talks about bringing more business to the area to grow the tax base and bring more people into our area to grow the tax base, which is actual, actually true. And we've done, it appears we've been doing that through our economy. And I know that, and I'm, I know, I'm not sure if these two are going to like this, but President Trump had a lot to do with that. And, you know, people have money in their pockets, the tax cuts have worked. And the airport boards, every airport board meeting we have, we have consecutively, month to month, since last January, we have broken records every single month at the airport for employments and filling our seats. And that can only be attributed to people having money to pay for those tickets that they didn't normally have. So, the economy's doing great, our unemployment is down. People must be buying homes and building homes for us to achieve these type of surpluses. And that's where Commissioner Niteriani, I do agree with you on that. And we've done that, and we're seeing that come to fruition through the surpluses that we're having. In addition to that, the cuts that we've implemented throughout the past four years have provided us with that surplus as well. We've tried to maintain the number of staff and not increase that. Now, I'm not sure how the, like, every year, the raises are going to be brought up and hurt that number. But I think we've all worked on that. And, you know, this consolidation of offices, I just am very proud to have been a part of that decision because that's something that I campaigned on. And, you know, people, we moved to this building and people tend to forget what they had before we moved into this building. So, just for those in the public to know, the buildings we're in prior to were pretty pathetic. I mean, we had leaks everywhere, we had ceilings crashing down on people's heads on a daily or weekly basis. We had elevators that didn't work, elevators that you didn't even want to walk into in some of the buildings. We had, now, I don't want to harp too much on that because I don't want to offend anyone out in the public. I've already done that by taking all this money off their rents. But, you know, there wasn't a lot of space, there was far travel, it was hard to find some of them parking. The residents would have to park and walk around the city to try and find which office they were looking for. And half the time, they didn't find it anyway. And the next time, they'd find out it was up in Mid Valley, you know? So, up in, up by Carbondale. So, you know, it's something that I'm very proud of and I will never not be proud of consolidation. I did, you know, agree with Commissioner to come into the Globe. And that was my compromise to get consolidation. And I think it was a good move. I remember coming to the meetings for years, talking about consolidation, all, a bunch of different commissioners. I mean, I was attending Commissioner meetings for about, since 2007. And, you know, I always pushed, pushed, pushed for consolidation. Why do we have, you know, I mean, and it got worse under the Republican leadership, I hate to say, but with all those buildings that we got, I mean, some of the buildings were paying a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for rents. I mean, that's crazy.
Ten years.
Yeah, I mean, that's just ridiculous. And I used to complain about it all the time. And that's something that really is a savings to the taxpayers. And it's provided the next administration with some, you know, really good base and foundation of savings there. Now, they, we didn't see that this year because we still had to rent some of the office spaces and we didn't, you know, we had to spend a little bit more than we thought. But that's, that happens. I mean, you know, they talk about us not meeting that eighteen million. Things come up, things happen, that there's just, that's just life, you know? You know, it's just something that happens. And I'm not going to apologize for that. But it's certainly not going to be a thirty-five million dollar bill unless somebody makes it that way. Any problems in this building? I mean, I don't agree with some of the renovations and stuff, but honestly, I wasn't involved in that. But the flooring, what do they want, marble? Like, I would never approve any marble floors coming in here.
See, our problem is, is if we made it like tarsal flooring, right? They'd be beating the daylights off us.
Well, it wouldn't matter. It wouldn't matter what we did, Commissioner.
Depending on what you had, so, you know, I mean, you try to be efficient in savings, you know what I mean?
Well, apparently, the thinking with the floors is that you can replace them less expensively if you have sections to replace rather than the whole entire thing if they get ruined. And I agree with that. So, I mean, that's fine. And as far as, I just want to really confirm, you know, clear up this sewer issue that people are talking about. There is no sewer problem. The problem was there was a mop head in the, somebody put a mop head in the sewer line. Now, whether that happened before or after, I don't know, but a toilet overflowed because of it. It wasn't an old sewer pipe that busted, that's not what happened. So, please stop saying that. That is, that's an actual lie. And it is not a fact that the sewer pipe busted, that is not what happened. A toilet overflowed three times. And, you know, that kind of makes you wonder why that happened. So, that really upsets me that that happened. You know, because it did destroy a lot of things and it really infuriates me that people have to be worried about working in that kind of an environment. And I don't like that. And I hope it doesn't happen to the next administration because that would be terrible for anyone to have to go through that with, you know, you know, the problems they had in that one office where the toilet overflowed three times. So, no reassessment was another thing that I talked about in the campaign, although some people twisted that. The Scranton Times confirmed for everyone in the public that I was always opposed to reassessment, so I thank them for that, for confirming that and not, you know, trying to twist the words on that. I've never been for reassessment, never will be. But, you know, it looks like we're going to get one. And, you know, yesterday in the paper, I didn't see the headline, but what I heard is that the Scranton, Scranton lost their lawsuit. Judge voted against the city in regards to overtaxing the residents on the 511 law, which anybody could figure that out that they were. So, why did that happen? Because the properties that are assessed now, their value is set at a certain amount right now. And based on percentages of that amount, we'll decide if the city was overtaxing the residents or not. If a reassessment is provided, the properties will go up in value on that reassessment to today's amounts, which will mean that they will no longer be in violation of that law. And they could most likely raise your taxes even more than they already have been, some areas, without having to go to the voters to put it on the ballot. So, that's why I say I am against reassessment as well. Uh, you, when you're being overtaxed, you should give a break to the taxpayers, not overtax them because you didn't manage your money or budgets appropriately. Um, I think we've, we've accomplished managing our budgets appropriately. I've offered up a budget with a three-mill tax cut with a twenty-seven million dollar surplus, so, um, you know, that was a huge accomplishment for me, I think, as, as a Republican, uh, sitting on the board and, um, I'm proud that, uh, I, I was able to do that. And I thank my fellow commissioners for always supporting some of the decisions and I really thank, uh, you know, both of them for supporting my role as vice chair on the board, uh, which I never expected in, in the, if anybody ever told me I would be the vice chair of, of Lackawanna County Commissioners as a Republican, I would have told them they were crazy. So, thank you both for your support on that, uh, decision and for voting me as vice chair, I do appreciate that. The other accomplishment that I think, um, I made with the help of Commissioner Niteriani was that we did not second a vehicle registration fee. So, um, not that Commissioner O'Malley did, but it was something that had come up to the board and we, we had on the agenda and there was no second on that. So, um, you know, it wasn't even able to go forward, it just was lingering there in the community and it did not pass. So, there was no additional taxes brought to you at all by this administration in any way, shape or form. Um, the, uh, other, uh, area that I really was focused on was the prison and, um, I always wanted to get part-time staff in the prison and when I first came on board, it was, you know, I mean, the unions were like, no, no, no. And, uh, Commissioner O'Malley did help me to accomplish that and I do appreciate his support on that decision. And I'm hoping that Commissioner Niteriani is able to increase those numbers, uh, so that we could save even more, um, in the future on part-time staff at the prison. It was a major accomplishment for me, I think, and, you know, I, I do appreciate the support on that.
So much.
Savings, we saved a lot of money. The evening meetings on a quarterly basis, I also want to thank you both for that. Um, that's something that I always wanted, was evening meetings and I never thought that I would be able to accomplish that either, so I do appreciate both your support on those. Um, all contracts being put up online for the unions, uh, from all the unions, for all the public to see, for greater transparency, I appreciate your support on that, uh, request and, um, I also of, support your, uh, I, I also appreciate your support on putting the tax appeals online along with their history, so you can archive and see how many people, uh, went to have an appeal, who they are and what their, uh, outcome was in the hearings, which was never done before. And I thank you both commissioners for supporting that decision, uh, that I had requested. Uh, debt consolidation was listed on this and I do really appreciate, um, the work we've done on that and I never, that was something I did campaign on, getting rid of the junk bond statuses and we did. Uh, we do not have those anymore, correct? Not one?
Nope.
Um, so it's all cleaned up. As of, uh, twenty nineteen, uh, you don't have those anymore. Uh, I did start, uh, starting salary, uh, I implemented that with HR and with the, um, Andy Wallace, who was helping me with the two commissioners and, um, we've, um, stayed true to that over the past four years, where if somebody leaves at eighty thousand dollars after being here for ten years, the next person that takes that job doesn't get the eighty thousand dollars where that person left off. We go back to a starting rate, which has also saved us a lot of money that, you know, I don't know, I don't have the numbers, but I could say it's, it must have saved us at least, I would assume around a hundred thousand dollars.
At least.
A- and that's minimal, I, I think it saved a lot more than that. Um, I think the implementation of work sessions for us, um, because when I first came on, um, I would have to read all this stuff on my own, all the contracts and everything, not knowing what any of this stuff was for, but the, uh, my fellow commissioners did agree to provide a work session prior to our, our meetings, which I do appreciate that, along with the department head meetings that you also implemented. I'm not sure who, who, I, I know I put a request in, but I don't know who did that. Um, the other huge accomplishment that I believe I made was the tax restructuring of the library tax. Um, right now, we have a separate library tax and a separate arts and culture tax on our, uh, tax bill. Um, arts and culture was donating an additional two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to the library when they already have a tax that the taxpayers pay. Uh, it's, you know, we already have that set, it's what we provide to them. So, um, the only thing we're now providing to that library is the, uh, sixty-eight, uh, thousand dollars for the La Library. Um, the remaining amount, um, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars was going to a Speaker's Bureau. Um, that Speaker's Bureau I spoke about and was adamantly opposed because one of the speakers was getting paid thirty thousand dollars, uh, just for one hour of their time, uh, with all, all the stuff included and, and that's just ridiculous. So, uh, thank you to my fellow commissioners for, uh, also helping me to and, uh, implementing that restructuring of, um, arts and culture money back to, providing a hundred and seventy thousand dollars back to arts and culture. Um, I, you know, when that, when I did that, when I did ask for that and we did implement that, um, the response from the arts community was to write a petition against me, somehow claiming I was, um, I don't know, all kinds of things. They wrote a petition against me. I guess they didn't realize that what I was doing was actually providing more funding for arts and culture. Um, but, you know, that's, that's just what happens. People don't understand what you're actually doing and they, they say different things. But, um, I'm hoping Maureen McGuigan appreciates that additional, uh, amount in her budget and I hope the next administration continues to keep it that way so that, um, arts and culture remains, that money remains in their, their program. I also, um, with reassessment, there was a lot of issues and I think one of them was, uh, as I did a reassessment across the county, was the permit process. And, um, I did request that we have Community Relations pick up those permits to bring them back to the counties so that they were being sufficiently, uh, paid and, and increase our revenue, which, I know the first quarter, it was something like seventy-four thousand that we increased our revenue by, just by doing that, just by picking up those permits. So, I hope that continues through Community, um, uh, Relations and I thank you for your support on that. Um, ridding the citizens of the cellphone debacle with these, uh, you know, covers for the cellphone, um, which I will thank everyone, uh, at ACLU for providing the facts that, yes, Lorraine Cummings does know what she's talking about and was right in her assessment that it was not appropriate. And, uh, you know, if it tries to happen again, you have that on the record so that you know that, uh, you can always bring your cellphone into this office, uh, into this meeting because that would be illegal for them to stop you from doing that because there's a video on your phone. So, uh, don't ever let them take your, your voice away from you. Created the first opioid task force at the commissioners level and I would, had, did that with the help of a few different departments, so, and my fellow commissioners, thank you so very much. Uh, and for, uh, supporting the lawsuit against the pharmaceuticals, which, um, uh, Commissioner Niteriani, I believe, came out to NACO with us. Did you come out with us that time to NACO?
I'm sorry?
Did you come out with, to NACO with us or no? To National Association of County Commissioners, were you there?
No, not with us.
With me? Oh, okay.
I was with the C cap.
Oh, okay, C cap. Well, I went out to the National Association, I was able to approach this, uh, this subject and we did a video on it and, um, you know, I, I, I do appreciate the fact that my fellow commissioners have given me so much leeway with pushing the envelope on this opioid crisis because that was something that was near and dear to my heart and, um, you know, I talk about it a lot because I've been affected by it a lot and, uh, not personally, well, yes, personally, um, in my family and in my work as a nurse. So, I, I would like to offer my congratulations to all of those that are out there celebrating one year of sobriety. Uh, congratulations, very proud of you. Um, you're a testament to other people, spread your message so that they can look to you so they know how to achieve the goal that you just did. Uh, and also, um, something, um, I initiated was a change in the workforce development, um, with the help of Virginia Toronto. Um, I read all the grants that come through and I found some issues that, uh, I brought to her attention and, you know, she said, you know, Commissioner, you're right, we, we have to change those. And she changed the entire format for one of her programs because of what I had asked her about and I do appreciate her, I want to make sure I thank her, uh, for helping me with that. And the last department, but not least, Conservation District, um, I don't know, Commissioner N- O'Malley always said he put me on that, he wanted me to, I don't know, he didn't think I'd do well on it, but, uh... I love the Conservation District, it's not what I thought it was gonna be and I think the public needs to know, especially those on, on the more conservative right like I am, I'm probably what you would call a right-wing, you know, Tea Party conservative. I would call myself that, I'd wear that as a badge of honor, but, um, you know, a lot of times, we look at those type of, um, environmental issues as wasteful and unnecessary. Um, and there are some programs that I voted no on, on, on the Conservation Board. However, the work that they do, it, it matters, they're doing a great job. Um, they've brought to our attention many problems that, that, uh, have been going on, on the environment that I wasn't aware of and my fellow commissioners weren't aware of. And the hard work that our farmers do is, you know, amazing to, to see what goes on in the farms that, you know, all the things that, the regulations that they're being inundated with. And, you know, I was, I, I am proud to have served on that. Um, and the Conservation District is an excellent board and, um, you know, I hope to one day maybe possibly volunteer on their board in the future just because of the work that, you know, I do like what they do and, and I would definitely volunteer for something like that again. So, I was just as shocked as you were, Commissioner O'Malley. So, thank you for that appointment. And, um, I'll leave the rest for the end of the meeting, but I'm sorry to drag on, I just wanted to make sure, those are different from what, isn't that interesting how it's different?
But there's, there's a lot, there's just so many, that's why I said there are much, much more.
Yeah.
Like, right off the bat.
Thank you for the time.
Absolutely. Commissioner Niteriani?
Well, I, I don't want to, uh, get involved in the, uh, conversations of the disagreements over reassessment or the building, we've talked about that for the last three and a half, four years, but, uh, I'm, you know, again, uh, we, we're able to do some good things also. And, uh, I'm very happy and Commissioner, you do a great job on the Conservation Board and I hope you stay there.
Yeah.
Um, it's, uh, it's been interesting, it's been, uh, quite a ride and, uh, thank you.
Um, there's like, there's so many things and, you know, we talk about it all the time, so I didn't even think about putting it on, but no tax increase, no tax increase, seven years. And one year, we did have one, we actually came up with an alternative way to not have the tax increase, but it got voted through. So, we had seven consecutive budgets without tax increase and everything and I, and Commissioner Cummings didn't think about it, neither, no political firings.
I do have on my list, but...
Rick Jones will tell you that our insurance, that we save hundreds of thousands of dollars due to the fact that we don't have political firings, we just have it. And one of the main reasons I'm here as a commissioner is because I was politically fired and it was wrong and it was unjust and I had seventeen years in the county. And, um, I'm here and the first thing I said to myself when I, if I was become chairman, I would make sure there be no political firings because I wasn't here to destroy people's lives, wasn't here to take someone out being a director. If you're doing your job, you're doing the right job and you care about Lackawanna County government, there's a home here for you. Somebody screws up, you deserve to be fired, but you're not getting fired politically under this administration. The work sessions, I came up with the work sessions, I sat here, I was in my minority at one point, but as a minority, I worked with the majority at all times. What I saw was, a lot of times, and the majority actually was in the same situation I was in, I saw that, there was a lot of things that we'd be voting on that it would take me a real long time to understand exactly what we were voting on going into a meeting. So, instead now, we have a work session and we started this with January of two thousand and sixteen, that everyone is brought in, that's gonna be speaking at that podium about what their issue is from whatever department there is, to explain exactly what the contract is, what we're gonna be voting on and, um, if we like the idea, we don't like the idea. So, that's been going on for the last four years. Um, and we started having department head meetings, once a month, we have a meeting with all of our department heads and we just ask them, what's, what's going on in your department and they just kind of rattle off. Parks and Recreation, Swimming's all, blah, 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 and we'll go through every single one, ask them questions and we're trying to accommodate them on stuff they might not be able to get to us with, to have an opportunity to see of us. So, we try to do a lot of great things and I think the administration has done a fine job and, congratulations, Commissioner Cummings.
Yeah, congratulations to you too and congratulations to, uh, Commissioner Niteriani and Debbie and...
Opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only. Okay, resolutions, nineteen dash zero three three five.
Thank you, Commissioner, this is approving the current payables, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County General Fund numbers two-nine-five-one-one-zero through two-nine-five-one-four-one inclusive totaling sixteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty-two cents. Electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling three hundred and one thousand dollars, three, three hundred and one thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and one cent.
Okay. Gary, everything, uh, Controller's Office, everything good?
Yes, Commissioners, all payables have been audited and, uh, approved by the Controller's Office and are in order. And of note, there's no, uh, payables on here regarding the Attorney General's probe.
The probe that we asked them to come in to do. Just so everybody remembers that one. Okay, I'd like to make a motion approving current payables, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Niteriani, Commissioner Cummings, Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes, nineteen dash zero three-two-two.
Thank you, Commissioner, this is entering into a GPS electronic monitoring agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a GPS electronic monitoring agreement with Sentinel Offender Services LLC for the Department of Community Corrections, contract to commence January first, two thousand and twenty and expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Here to speak on the resolution is the Director of Community Corrections, Brian Jeffers.
Good morning, Brian.
Good morning, Board, how are you today? In front of you today is the contract, uh, that we talked about in the, uh, the work sessions for going, uh, switching from the, the home monitoring system that we currently use, uh, to a GPS system. Our general counsel read over the, uh, the contract and he fully vetted it, he did send some corrections back, they were made and he was pleased with, uh, those corrections and he has seen for that it, this, uh, contract should be entered into resolution. Uh, with me today is Michael Dean from Sentinel, if you have any questions for him about the product, um, or any other questions for me about the product.
This is the Board, any questions for Mr. Jeffers? That's where the work session comes in handy, so we have a good idea of what's going on. I'd like to make a motion entering into a GPS electronic monitoring agreement, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Niteriani.
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes, thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Nineteen dash zero three-two-three.
Thank you, Commissioner, this is entering into an addendum to a lease agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an addendum to a lease agreement with the Moscow Fire and Hose Company for the magistrate's office to extend the lease until March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. Here to speak on this is Attorney Don Frederickson.
Thank you, Commissioners. Um, Commissioners, this lease and the next lease with, uh, entering into a, a lease agreement with, um, uh, for the magistrate's office in Moscow, the situation is the magistrate's office in Moscow is not AD accessible and has presented a number of problems over the years. We've been searching for a, a suitable location to move it to, we found one. Uh, it's currently being renovated, it's actually right next door. Um, the problem is, it's not gonna be ready until April first, but our current lease with the host company expires at the end of this month, so we are doing an extension. This first one is an extension for the Moscow Fire Company to extend the lease from the end of December until the end of March. And then the second, uh, item, nineteen dash oh-three-two-four, is entering into a new lease agreement with the new landlord, starting, uh, April first of this year, of two thousand and twenty, and that's a ten-year lease going forward.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion entering into an addendum to lease agreement, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Niteriani.
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes. Nineteen dash zero three-two-four, I'd like to make a motion entering into an magistrate lease agreement, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Niteriani. Commissioner Cummings.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes. Nineteen dash zero three-two-five.
Thank you, Commissioner, this is entering into a lease agreement with the Visitors' Bureau, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a lease agreement with the Lackawanna County Convention and Visitors' Bureau, with the Visitors' Bureau leasing space on the first floor of the building located at one thirty-five Jefferson Avenue, to commence January first, two thousand and twenty and expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-nine, at twenty-one hundred dollars per month. And here to speak on this, uh, resolution is the Executive Director of the Visitors' Bureau, Kurt Camone.
Good morning, Kurt.
Good morning.[1775.83]
Good morning. Um, the Visitors Bureau's, excuse me, thrilled with our new home that we moved into, um, just under a year ago, last January. Uh, we feel it's an asset to the community. It puts us in a very good, good location. Uh, and it's been a wonderful workspace for us, and it better fits, uh, the trends that are, are happening in tourism and hospitality. We're able to have a smaller area where visitors can come in, um, still get all the services that we've always provided, but also have enough space to have offices and conference rooms that we can get our sales and marketing business done as well. Um, and we're really excited about entering into a long-term lease agreement.
This is some of the monies that we talk about with leases and rents that are paying for this building. Am I right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, congratulations. Um, the visitor center is between two of our largest hotels.
Yep, we're located right between the Radisson and the Hilton. And again, it's, it's brought us downtown where there is a lot more opportunity to get people walking in off the street. Um, the time of people jumping in their car, driving to an area, and then going to a visitor center to figure out what they're going to do for the day has really gone by the wayside. For all intents and purposes, your, the majority of, of what takes place at your visitor center, where they're visiting to find out and make plans, is your website. Um, so we do still have an area where folks can come in, get all of the information that they have. We enjoy having people in and love servicing them. But this provides us with the ability to have a day-to-day work environment that is conducive to the sales and marketing that we're doing, uh, at the Visitors Bureau.
I think it's a great spot. Does the Board have any questions for Mr. Camoni? I'd like to make a motion entering into a lease agreement with the visitor center. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Notterianni.
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Nineteen dash zero three two six.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is entering into an agreement with Alcohol Monitoring Systems. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County on behalf of the courts does hereby enter into a software subscription and services agreement with Alcohol Monitoring Systems Incorporated for the term of seven years. Here to speak on this resolution is the Court Administrator Frank Castellano.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. This, uh, program, software program is known as Nexus. It is an evidence-based practices program, uh, which will, the courts will use to monitor the risk and needs of those individuals, uh, under our supervision. Uh, as I explained during the work session, uh, there is no cost to the county, uh, for this program, uh, because the Treatment Court Advocacy Center applied for and received a grant, and it's the grant money that's paying for this. And also, this is going to work hand in hand with the new UCM program. So we believe this is a great opportunity. It's very timely. Uh, it is cost-effective and efficient, and we respectfully request that it be accepted today.
Frank, talk about the UCM program, which we've talked about as one of our, our pluses. It does not put everybody on the same page. It's more efficient and effective and gets everybody out?
It does. And I, I was here earlier this morning, Commissioner, when you spoke about it. And obviously, we want to thank, you know, the Board of Commissioners and, and the IT Department and, you know, all of the departments that worked so hard over the past several years to implement unified case management. Uh, it's, it's now going to allow the Adult Probation Department, the District Attorney's Office, and the prison, uh, and the courts, uh, to literally be on the same page, uh, with the information. It, it's going to really change, uh, the dynamics of how we, uh, review information and therefore make decisions. So we're, we're grateful that, that the Board moved, uh, that contract along last year.
Thanks. Okay, any questions for Frank? I'd like to make a motion entering into agreement with the Alcohol Monitoring System. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Notterianni.
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
Thank you.
Nineteen dash zero three two seven.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is awarding the professional services contract with Vision Planning and Consulting LLC. Whereas the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, requires the Hazard Mitigation Plan for counties to be periodically updated. And whereas contingent upon that approval, the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency will be providing funding for Lackawanna County to update the 2015 Hazard Mitigation Plan for the county. And whereas the plan update must be completed and approved by FEMA by July thirty-first, 2020. Whereas the county has solicited proposals from consultants to undertake the planning process in conjunction with the Lackawanna County Department of Planning and Economic Development and Lackawanna County Emergency Management Agency. And whereas the county hereby authorized the Chairman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign all documents related to this contract. Now therefore be it resolved that Lackawanna County does hereby award and enter into a professional services contract with Vision Planning and Consulting LLC of Fulton, Maryland to complete the plan at a cost of fifty-one thousand eight hundred dollars. Here to speak on this resolution is the Acting Director of Economic Development, Brenda Sacco.
Good morning, Brenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. This resolution is approving, um, the award of the professional services contract, again, with Vision Planning and Consulting LLC for fifty-one thousand eight hundred. And it is updating our, um, mandatory plan for hazard mitigation for the county.
Does the Board have any questions for Brenda? I'd like to make a motion awarding professional service contract with Vision Planning and Consulting LLC. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Notterianni.
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings, Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes. Nineteen dash zero three two eight.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is authorizing the submissions for the County Development Block Grant Program. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna does hereby authorize the submission of an application in the amount of two hundred and seventy-one thousand four hundred twenty-seven dollars for the Community Development Block Grant Non-Entitlement Municipalities in Lackawanna County under the federal fiscal year 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program as administered by the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. And be it further resolved that the county proposes the following activities under the county's non-entitlement application. Lackawanna County for Non-Entitlement Municipalities, uh, FFY 2019 CDBG Program Funds, two hundred seventy-one thousand four hundred twenty-seven dollars. Proposed activities, administration, forty-eight thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars. Proposed activity, rehab, single-unit residential, CDBG Program Funds, sixty-eight thousand eight hundred seventy dollars. Municipality, German Borough. Proposed activity, Parks and Recreation Facilities, Headstar Playground Equipment Program Funds, sixty thousand three hundred forty-one dollars. Municipality, Clifton Township. Proposed activities, handicap barriers removal, ADA restrooms, funds of ninety-three thousand three hundred sixty dollars. Be it further resolved that the Board does authorize the submission of separate Community Development Block Grant applications on behalf of the following communities. Entitlement communities include Archibald Borough Program Funds, a hundred and twenty thousand three hundred and six dollars. Proposed activity, rehab, single-unit residential administration. Municipality Administration, Blakely Borough Program Funds, one hundred and sixteen thousand seventy-eight dollars. Proposed activities, rehab, single-unit residential administration. Municipality Clark Suma Borough Program Funds, one hundred and one thousand five hundred and two dollars. Proposed activity, single-unit residential administration rehab. Municipality Dixon City Borough Program Funds, one hundred eleven thousand one hundred five dollars. Uh, activities, street improvements, Veterans Drive, forty-three thousand seven hundred and ninety-three dollars. Rehab, single-unit residential, s- forty-seven thousand three hundred fourteen dollars. Municipality Dunmore Borough Program Funds, one hundred and ninety-one thousand five hundred and eight dollars. Rehab, single-unit residential administration. Municipality Jessup Borough Program Funds, ninety-seven thousand seventy-two dollars. Housing rehab, single-unit residential administration. Municipality Old Forge Borough, one hundred and thirty-three thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars. Proposed activity, rehab barriers, handicap barriers, removal borough building, ADA elevator administration. Municipality Elephant Borough Program Funds, one hundred and one thousand eight hundred fifty-four dollars. Activity, rehab, single-unit residential administration. Municipality Scott Township Program Funds, ninety-nine thousand three hundred seventy-seven dollars. Rehab, single-unit residential administration. Municipality Taylor Borough Program Funds, one hundred and thirteen thousand forty-eight dollars. Rehab, single-unit residential administration. Municipality Troop Borough Program Funds, ninety-one thousand one hundred fifty-three dollars. Be it further resolved that Lackawanna County will comply with the terms of Pennsylvania Act one seventy-nine in connection with the above-mentioned grant program serving the needs of low and moderate income residents and eliminating, uh, slums and blighted influences. Here to speak on this is Brenda Sacco.
Morning again. Uh, this resolution is authorizing the submission of the FFY 2019 CDBG application on behalf of our entitlement and non-entitlement communities. Um, the entire amount of the application, when you put them all together, is, um, approximately one point five million dollars. And all of these projects, um, have been chosen by the municipalities themselves and have had citizen participation.
Does the Board have any questions? I'd like to make a motion authorizing submission of the Committee Development Block Grant Program. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Notterianni.
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings. Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes. Nineteen dash zero three two nine.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is entering into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Dunmore. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby authorized to enter into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Dunmore for the Dunmore Mill Street Sidewalk and Pavement Project. Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna does hereby award the following Community Development Block Grant Construction Contract for the Borough of Dunmore Mill Street Sidewalk and Pavement Project. General construction, Leeward Construction from Honesdale, the lowest, most responsible and qualified bidder for two hundred eighty-seven thousand three hundred thirty-seven dollars. Here to speak on this resolution is Brenda Sacco.
Uh, this resolution is approving standard required CDBG agreements for the Dunmore Borough, Mill Street Sidewalk and Pavement Project. Uh, the cooperation agreement is with the, um, municipality, and it's between the county, and it states the rights and responsibilities of both parties. And this agreement also protects the county in the case of project overages. The contractor agreement awards the project to the contractor, who again was the lowest, most responsible bidder, who in this case is Leeward Construction for two hundred eighty-seven thousand three hundred thirty-seven.
Okay, does the Board have any questions?
I, I, I'm gonna have to ask for my solicitor's opinion on this because I just don't feel that this is appropriate.
Without going beyond what, uh, we should, uh, discuss, um, there's, uh, suffice it to say there, there, there may be a legal issue which has been, uh, uh, discussed with Commissioner Cummings. And, uh, given the possible concerns that arise out of that, uh, I've, I've advised her at this time, at least at this time, to abstain from voting on that project, given that circumstance.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion entering into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Dunmore. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Notterianni.
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings.
I'll abstain based on my solicitor's, uh, opinion.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes. Nineteen dash zero three three zero.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is entering into an Area Agency on Aging Agreement. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a professional services agreement on behalf of the Area Agency on Aging with Metz Culinary Management Incorporated for the congregate meal provider, a, to commence January first, first, 2020, and to expire on June thirtieth, 2020. Here to speak on this resolution is Aging Executive Director, Jason Kavulich.
Good morning again.
Good morning again. Uh, this contract will allow us to provide congregate meals to our senior centers in both Abington and Taylor for the time being. Um, we are renewing an already previously established agreement with Metz to provide to both of those centers. Uh, they came back with a fair offer, good price, and they put out an excellent product that our centers really enjoy.
Good. Does the Board have any questions? I'd like to make a motion entering into an aging agreement with, an area aging agreement on aging. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Notterianni.
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes. Thanks. Nineteen dash zero three three one.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is approving an OYFS Arts Engagement Agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an agreement on behalf of the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Services for Arts Engage with the Center for the Analysis and Prevention of Crime in, of the University of Scranton Agreement to commence December first, 2019, and expire November thirtieth, 2020. Here to speak on this resolution is Carrie Browning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Um, this would, um, allow us to enter in our second year of researching our Arts Engage programs that are currently being provided through the county. Um, the Office of Youth and Family Services has always been a research-grounded department within the county, which has allowed us to choose evidence-based practices and provide the best, um, services to our families, the best outcomes, and not have to raise our budget any more than, um, it already is providing those services. Um, those have the benefit of research already attached to them to let us know that they're working. Our own programs within the county do not, so we have partnered with the University of Scranton. We want to make sure that what we're delivering is effective, and if it's not, what needs to be enhanced to, um, give our community the best that they deserve.
Does the Board have any questions? I'd like to make a, a motion approving an OYFS Arts Engage Agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Notterianni.
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes. Nineteen dash zero three three two.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is entering into a purchase of service agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a purchase of service agreement on behalf of the Department of Human Service Office of Youth and Family Services and Juvenile Probation and P.A. Child Agreement in effect from July first, 2019, through June thirtieth, 2020. And here to speak once again is the OYFS Deputy Director, Carrie Browning.
Uh, this would allow us to continue to reach out to P.A. Child when we are looking for a foster home because family, um, could not be located for our children. We currently do not have any children here, but we have had to call them in the past, and they suggested that we have a contract in place in case we do need to reach out again.
Okay. Does the Board have any questions? I'd like to make a motion entering into a purchase service agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Notterianni.
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes. Thanks, Carrie.
Thank you.
Nineteen dash zero three three four.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution creating and establishing the Rocky Glen Park Advisory Committee. Whereas currently there, this does not exist and is an amusement park within Lackawanna County, the existence of which would add to the overall economic and quality of life benefits for the residents of Lackawanna County. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County believe it to be in the interest of the residents of Lackawanna County to assess the feasibility of developing an amusement park in Lackawanna County. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners desire to establish an advisory committee to investigate the various options and alternatives available for the development of an amusement park in Lackawanna County. And creation and purposes. The purpose of this resolution is to create the Rocky Glen Amusement Park Advisory Committee that will use available resources to study the feasibility of developing an amusement park in Lackawanna County to promote tourism and economic development in the county. The Amusement Park Committee will hold public meetings and meet with local government partners, investors, businesses, and other community stakeholders to discuss the feasibility of attracting an amusement park in Lackawanna County, identifying the public and private resources available to help attract and develop an amusement park, identify potential locations to house an amusement park, identify potential investors and/or businesses to develop an amusement park, and assess the potential economic impact of having an amusement park in Lackawanna County. Committee, number of members. The Amusement Park Committee shall be comprised of nine members who shall be appointed by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County by resolution. The members of the committee shall serve at the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners. The following members are hereby appointed as initial members of the committee. Robert Savakinas, Kurt Camoni, Doug Farr, Richard Sedel, Sedelnik, Mary Ann Savakinas, Chris Burnett, Chris Barrett, uh, Andrew Zahorsky, and two others to be appointed. Meetings of the committee. The Amusement Park Committee shall hold regular public meetings and shall allow for public comment on matters under deliberation at such committee public meeting.[1659.82] comment on matters under deliberation at such committee public meeting. The place, date, and time of the committee meeting shall be determined at the discretion of the officers. All meetings of the committee shall comply with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act. Amusement park advisory committee duties. The amusement park committee shall have the following duties: to conduct regular public meetings to gain input and information relevant to developing an amusement park in Lackawanna County; assess the feasibility of attracting and developing an amusement park, including but not limited to assessing the economic impact of an amusement park to Lackawanna County; the interest in the stakeholders and residents of Lackawanna County in having an amusement park; the scope and content of such a park, potentially locations to house an amusement park; to identify and engage with business and investors who are qualified to run and develop an amusement park in Lackawanna County; to identify available public and private resources, grants, tax incentives, that would be available to businesses and investors interested in developing an amusement park in Lackawanna County; to make regular reports to the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners of its findings and recommendations, and all other duties as provided for, authorized, or allocated by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion creating and establishing the Rocky Glen Park Advisory Committee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Other question. This is something that this administration has talked about a little bit here and there, and it's always been something that you always think about. If Rocky Glen had survived into the late 90s, what might have happened? We have baseball, we have a water park on Music, on Montage Mountain, there's so many great things, we have concerts. You know, I mean, you could come here and have a great vacation. And the one thing we always lacked was amusement parks since the closing of Rocky Glen. All we have to do is look at Cannibals, you know, I mean, Cannibals is in a small community. Great family runs it, family tradition, over 100 years. Why can't Lackawanna County have this opportunity? This committee is very similar to the committee that's set up for the Fair Board. So their job is basically going to see if this is something that can work, what the finances are, or if there's anybody that might want to come to Lackawanna County and invest in a park. Full-time, part-time jobs, especially for the kids, it could be a great opportunity for citizens and a great quality of life opportunity, so. Commissioner Cummings?
At Rocky Glen, I grew up there, so I mean, if they can bring this park here, that would be reminiscent of that, I'd be all for it.
Commissioner Niteriani?
No.
Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Niteriani.
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes. Nineteen dash zero three four two.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is accepting an interest arbitration award. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby accept and ratify the interest arbitration award between the County of Lackawanna and Lackawanna County Assist Public Defenders Teamsters Local Union 229, contract term effective retro January 1st, 2019, and ending on December 31st, 2022. And here to speak on this resolution is Deputy Director of Human Resources, Justin McGregor.
Thank you. Commissioners, this is the binding interest arbitration award that we received back. I believe the terms are favorable for us. The wages in comparison to other third-class counties are pretty low, and it opens the door for us to pursue healthcare contributions with other collective bargaining units in the future.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. McGregor?
Why did we have the arbitration to begin with? What was the complaint?
Pardon me, Commissioner?
What created this?
This is Act 195, binding interest arbitration.
Right. Did you have, what happened that we had to have this award?
Both the union and the county could not reach an agreement in negotiations. Negotiations were cordial, but it broke down over wages and healthcare.
Okay.
We both presented our side, and again, I think this is favorable for the county, especially moving forward.
Okay.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion accepting an interest arbitration award. Do I have a second? Roll call.
Commissioner Niteriani.
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes. Thanks, Justin. Nineteen dash zero three three six.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is appointments to the Women's Commission. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby make the following appointments to the Lackawanna County Women's Commission. Maria Gillette from Carbondale, a three-year term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2022. And also, Lorraine Cummings of Old Forge, a three-year term as well, to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2022.
There was somebody else. Miss one. Lynn Kekinda of Music.
Yeah, her.
You have her?
Yeah. Lynn Kekinda?
Lynn Kekinda of Music. Same term, to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2022.
Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to make the motion for the appointments to the Women's Commission. Do I have a second?
I may vote for myself on that.
I would abstain from yours. Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Niteriani.
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings.
Abstain.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners.
You're welcome. Nineteen dash zero three three three.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a motion to award the bids for the construction of Lackawanna County Criminal Justice Center to the lowest responsible bidder. Number one, General Trades Marpall Company Incorporated at $1,913,000. Number two, HVAC Scranton Electric Cooling and Heating, $496,999. Number three, Plumbing Scranton Electric Cooling and Heating, $237,943. And number four, Electrical Joyce Electrical, $493,800. Here to speak on this resolution, on this motion, is Mike Hogan.
Good morning, Mike. Good morning. The bids were received, as we all know, last Friday, December 13th. They were reviewed by the design team and found to be all in order. The ones that would be recommended, as noted, were Marpall for General Trades, Scranton Electric Heating and Cooling for HVAC, also Scranton Electric Heating and Cooling for Plumbing, and Joyce Electric for the electrical contract.
Does the board have any questions?
I just want, I got an email on this. Is there any issues with that? Is that an issue? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to award the bids to construction of Lackawanna County Criminal Justice Center to the lowest responsible bidder. Do I have a second?
Second.
Other question. I'd like to just say that I believe that this build-out is going to put us in a situation where the county prison is going to be so much more secure, especially if we're going to courts, because a lot of our regular duty, bringing our inmates down to the Lackawanna County courthouse, is Central Court. The Central Court is going to be just a hallway from the prison in this facility. The other thing is Lackawanna, the Lackawanna County prison is landlocked, and us buying that building gives us a parking lot, a courtroom, and lots of other opportunities. It's very efficient, and I think it's going to be very effective in keeping security in the prison. And the idea is that the inmate's never going to leave actually the security of the jurisdiction of the prison, so it's efficient in all different avenues. Roll call.
Commissioner Niteriani.
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes. Thanks. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Well, Commissioners, Charles Brewer from Greenfield Township. I'd just like to compliment you on your achievements for this last administration. It's been amazing what you guys have done. I want to thank you for that. One note, as Secretary of Greenfield Township, I do see the building permits that go through, and I do see a lot of the sales of homes that go through. So really, reassessment is happening by attrition. I don't see any reason for reassessment, just so you know that. I mean, when someone, you know, adds on to their house, they need a building permit, you know, that increases the tax base. When someone buys a home, that increases the tax base. So the county's tax base is being increased, you know, by attrition, so just, I'll let you know that.
And we can see that in the numbers, too, so thank you.
Commissioner Cummings, I would like to congratulate you for being the first woman elected as a county commissioner.
Thank you.
That was not mentioned today at all, but congratulations.
We're not finished yet.
You're a champion for the taxpayers, you're a champion for the farmers, as an owner of a farm that I loaned out to someone. Personally, you've given me information that has helped our farmers, and you're also a champion for small businesses. You've been criticized in the past unduly by members of the other political party, by members of your own political party, and by the press. And you endeavored to persevere, you kept on going, and that's the sign of a true leadership, true leader. So I just want to say that God has a plan for you. And here's a Bible verse that I think you're familiar with, and it applies to you. "For I know the plans I have for you, declares the Lord, plans for peace and not for evil, plans for a future and for hope." And that's Jeremiah, Chapter 29, verse 11. So I'd like to thank you for everything that you did. And Commissioner O'Malley, you have a compassion for veterans, and you have a compassion for people.
That's right.
You know?
My parents made me.
And that's very visible, and I'd like to thank you, you know, for having that characteristic. Personally, you gave me contacts for an elderly veteran, and by these contacts, we were able to put a smile on his face, and we were able to help him enjoy the later part of his life. And I'd really like to thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right?
Veterans Matter, I always say, if it wasn't, that's why at the beginning of our meeting, we always start with our veteran. Our veteran gets, does the pledge, because we wouldn't be sitting here today if it wasn't for our veterans and our servicemen and women that are fighting abroad right now. We wouldn't be here, so.
I just hope that, and pray, that Commissioner Niteriani continues on with your compassion for people, your compassion for veterans, and Lorraine's compassion for business owners, farmers, you know, and the taxpayers. I was, I'm concerned because Commissioner Niteriani voted against a tax cut. He voted against keeping the taxes, no tax increase. There's only one option left for him to support, and that's a tax increase. And I hope and I pray that that won't happen. He has an opportunity to open up the budget, from what I understand, in January, and he should definitely, and the rest of the new Commissioners, be champions for the taxpayers. Keep the no-tax increase or give us a tax cut. Property owners are hurting in Lackawanna County. And God forbid, should we ever get a rain tax, which I know that you two support not having that.
Right.
That would cripple, cripple this county.
I forgot to mention that.
Commissioner O'Malley and Commissioner Cummings, your absence is a huge loss to this county.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And Merry Christmas, everyone.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Anyone else?
Yes, Marie Schumacher. 1799 East Mountain Road in Scranton. I want to thank you for primarily no-tax increase. I live in a city that always seems to have a willingness to pick up the slack in some area, but I do appreciate that, and I appreciate the fact that you have, I think, added much more transparency. I hope that will continue to increase. I did disagree, as you're aware, with several things, this building being one. While I was a great proponent for a single, single source, I was not happy with this building. And I have to confess, when I first came in, I got off the elevator and I looked down at the flooring, and I thought, oh my goodness, they got the flooring at Ollie's. And I was really expected to, you know, go around a corner and see a change because they ran out of that kind of, that round of boxes of flooring, but of course, that wasn't the case. But I did, in the future, as I thought more about it, and my conscience got to me and said, wait a minute, when you were working in Washington, you really got your blood pressure up when you saw exotic woods, tables being built and using our tax dollars. And it really can't have it both ways. So I have learned to be thankful for this building and that it isn't a Taj Mahal, it is a, an efficient operation.
Thank you.
And then, of course, the other one is reassessment, which I will continue to work for, not as it's been done in the past. It's, we don't need our grandmother's reassessment. We need a, one that's based on technology and hopefully on a statewide basis. We don't need each county to do their own. All we have to do is do it right, and then we can update it every year. I lived in a state where that was done. It was fair, and I hope that's what we will have very soon, because it's very needy. And as a supporter of Lorraine, I would, will certainly miss you, but I expect to see both of, two of you in public life continuing in some manner. I don't know what it is, but that's because I am here and not home clearing, cleaning my crystal ball. And with the vets, I would suggest maybe if it continues, that once in a while, maybe every quarter, you invite a spouse of a vet who's deployed to come here, too, because they, those families make big sacrifices as well, so their husbands can go and do what they do. And then I will conclude with, because it has been a long meeting, that while the Scranton Times Tribune has not been always kind to Lorraine, I do want to note that they have paid you a great compliment, because shortly after the election, when I guess they weren't sure that we're going to have the new, the small business spotlight, they decided to introduce the Behind the Business, which this is one, and that will be recurring in the newspaper. So I hope you feel that you, maybe they'll give you a commission.
I doubt it. That would be.
That's great.
Have a great future, all of you, and a wonderful blessed Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Commissioner Cummings?
Well, I just want to thank both of you. I'll address your other commentary at the end. I want to thank you both for coming in. I want to thank all the residents for coming in, that, you know, Joan, where is Joan? Did she have to leave? Oh, okay, well, you know, Joan and Marie and Chaz and all those that do come on a continual basis, whether they agree with me or not, I appreciate the fact that they're here and taking the time out of their busy schedule to come and either give us their opinion against what we're doing or for what we're doing. I always want to hear people's voices regardless of their opinion, and I do appreciate the fact that they come in and give them to me. And I appreciate the opinions that have been sent to me over the past few years as you're sitting Commissioner. I do thank you, anyone in the public who has reached out to me, I thank you. I kind of, I don't know what to say, because I guess it's my last meeting and I'm kind of, for the first time, speechless, so. I'm not sure how it would have been different, as I said earlier, if I, you know, voted a different way when I first came on board, but like I said, we'll see the change, I guess we'll know once that happens. But with that, I do appreciate both of my fellow Commissioners and the work, I appreciate working with both of you and seeing the differences. Had I ever been Chairman of this board, I would have done a lot of things differently. Like I said, we have a different philosophy as Commissioner, as Democrats and Republicans, and that's the way it's supposed to be. So you're supposed to have that give and take, and you're supposed to be able to have a compromise solution and work it out, or not, you know? And when you can't, you have the two-party system that takes over and says, sorry, but you don't get what you want. I've been blessed to have the ability to make, as I said, over 20 changes at the county, which is unheard of. I truly don't believe that there's ever been a minority commissioner that's had the ability to work with two gentlemen that have compromised their positions to side with me on specific votes. So I do thank you for that. I really wish I could have got my tax cut for the taxpayers, but that didn't happen. But we did not have a tax increase, and I thank you for that, Commissioner, for keeping that promise to me. I'm trying really hard not to cry, so hang on a minute. You know, the two, Marie and Chaz talked about some of the things about how I was treated in the media, by my own party, by other parties, and I agree, but that's part, and you're right, Chaz, that is part of being a leader. Nobody, you know, nobody's going to agree with you 100% of the time. Marie and myself don't agree on reassessment, but I love her with all my heart. She's a wonderful friend, and, you know, I appreciate all of her help over the years, and Chaz, you as well. People will ask, how do you do it? How do you, how do you, how do you get up there and face the public on a daily basis after what they've said? Every Commissioner up here has gone through it, right? You two have been chastised in the media, you've been talked about, you know what it's like. You get these emails, crazy emails, some of the emails I've received over the years have been horrible. And, you know, it's kind of like my life, and I don't, I don't like to talk about it because I get emotional when I talk about my history, you know? So I'm going to try and be really short and brief on that. But it is a valid point, and my answer to that is that I have faith in God. That's where I get my strength, is through Him. And you can't deny that there is something, some type of higher power, when, you know, you have a little girl that was born in a family where a few other siblings were involved and, you know, was actually scooped up by a family and saved from a devastating situation. The family becomes a foster home just to take care of that little girl. And, you know, that little girl is sitting right here today, you know? And I'm so blessed to have been given that opportunity. I, you know, I can't I, you know, I can't thank my Creator, my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, enough. He is the true hero of my life and my... I am an imperfect servant, as everyone has seen. I don't, I'm not infallible. I do make mistakes, but it's been a pleasure to be able to serve Him and to serve the people of this county. And I thank Him for the opportunity. I hope I've done what He's hoped I would do. I hope I made the right decisions in His name. I always try to give Him glory, not myself, because I, obviously, I don't deserve it as a sinner, and, but, you know, I've been blessed to have His grace and salvation. And that is, that is the basis of where, and my foundation where I come from, and without that, I would not have been able to tolerate some of the things that have gone on, not only here, but in, throughout my lifetime, as obviously you could see through how it went. And, you know, I hope that I was able to promote that throughout my service as your commissioner, and I just want to thank all of the staff of Lackawanna County for putting up with my questions, and I'm very tough at times, and I know that, but it's only because I'm concerned about budgeting and money, and most of you knew that, some of you didn't. To those that took it personal, I'll just apologize to you. It wasn't you. It's just me being me. And I appreciate the staff that came in and tried to work with me and changed some of the programs, and I definitely appreciate those employees at the Conservation Board for providing such a great environment to me and to those that work there. They do an excellent job, and I am so proud of them, and I hope that I can make sure that I continue to promote the work that they do in some way or fashion. I'm not sure how that is, but wherever God leads me is where I'll go. And, you know, I just want to make sure that I thank my friends that are here. I have so many friends, Lynn and Marie and Chaz, that are here, and those that aren't. I want to thank Jim O'Meara, who came on board with me to help me, because I didn't think I was going to win this, so I never planned on having a secretary. I never hired anyone, and he came on to help me out for the first year. And Lena, I have no idea how to say your last name to this day, after working with you for two years. So, we'll just say Lena Kay.
Yeah, Lena Kay, there you go.
And most of all, I want to thank John Sarah, who's helped me in so many different ways. Thank you, John. Thank you, and thank you, everyone. Thank you. It's been a pleasure, by the way, with you as well, Cherry. I know we argue a lot, but congratulations on your win and good luck in the future. And thank you, Commissioner O'Malley, so very much.
You're welcome.
For working with me over the years.
Yeah, we talked about all the accomplishments, so I wanted to make sure that Commissioner Cummings got one of her major accomplishments for her job well done, 2019. There you go.
Oh. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, there's also been something sent here from CCAP.
Okay.
You're being recognized. A certificate of appreciation presented to Lorraine A. Cummings and to Commissioner Patrick O'Malley. In recognition of your generous years of service and outstanding commitment of time, support, and talent, on behalf of county government in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, during your tenure as a county commissioner, your advocacy for the policies and issues of county government, and your strong and insightful skills have done much to enhance the lives of the county's citizens and to strengthen the communities within your county. The highest reward for a person's toil is not what they get for it, but what they become by it. Written by John Russian, and this is from the CCAP County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania.
Oh, that's so nice. That's so nice.
Let's see what we can. Commissioner Natariani?
I just want to tell the clinic Commissioner Cummings.
I would also like to congratulate Commissioner Cummings for being the first lady of Lackawanna County. I mean, she won an election that a lot of people didn't think that she'd win, and she won. And when she got here, they always say, like, you know, like, what would you do, like, if you have the power? I've heard a lot of old politicians say, you know, when you have the power, you gotta do this, you gotta do that. And then a lot of them will say, well, jeez, when I was there, time went by too fast, and I didn't use that power. Well, if you look at those accomplishments, we pressed eight years into four years. Everything, from finances to buildings to contracts, you name it, everything. And this, especially this building, was because of Commissioner Cummings. Four months into the office, April 26th, 2016, we bought this building, and we started utilizing it as Lackawanna County Government Center at the Globe. From there forward, we were doing blood drives, to the market being there, and everything that we could possibly use it for. And we kept a big reception area downstairs, so it could be utilized for things going into the future, including the market outside. This is the citizens' building. They pay for it. They own it. It's not a waste of rents or leases any longer. It's their building, and that's because of Commissioner Cummings. Thank you, Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley.
I would like to personally thank all of our employees, full-time and part-time, for the great job they do. You know, it's Lackawanna County Government. I think there's 1,175 complete, would form part-time. I really thank every single one of them for coming to work and doing the job every day. Our government touches every single citizen of Lackawanna County all the time, 214,000 of them. In some way, somehow, somewhere, it just does. I would like to thank all the citizens that elected us to be commissioners. It was a great eight years. I really enjoyed it. There was never a day that I walked in here that I didn't look up at the sky and thank my parents for making me who I am, and the fact that it was an honor to be a commissioner. It's an honor till the day it's over, in January. It really has been an honor, and it's been an incredible learning experience. And all I can say is, it's, it was a fast eight years. It really was. It was a fast eight years. I'd like to thank our solicitors, John Sarah, John Brazil, Donnie Frederickson. You know, these are the people I dealt with all the time. Fran Pantuso. We always talk about how we take our employees, and we, there's no ceiling on what you can be. She went from being another title to being the chief of staff. That's what this administration was about. To everybody on the commissioners' floor, thank you for all your help. Thank you for being there, and thank you for the hard work. It is, it's hard work, but it's really fulfilling. And, you know, at the end of the day, it really matters. I said I'd like to especially thank my parents. I'd like to especially thank my parents, my mom and my dad, they're both in heaven, for making me who I am. My wife, Christine, who's always been there, and made sure when I ran the first time that I was, that we were, that she was a big part of the campaign in making it happen. She really, really did. And my two sons, they grew up inside of this. My son Vincent, who's 12 years old, and my son Patrick, who's 18, who's a senior in high school. I couldn't be prouder of the two of them. They're great kids, they really are. They get great work ethic. They really, really do. And to the rest of my family, my brothers, my brother, my sister, Mary and Matthew, and all my other relatives, my cousin Jimmy Barrett, everybody that's just had such a huge impact, some of my closest friends, to all of you, thank you for being there. Thank you for coming out for the events. Thank you for helping me. Thank you for being part of my life. There's just too many people to thank. I can't name them all. There's just so many. I'd miss them all. There's so many. But it has been an honor to be your commissioner, and an incredible honor to be the chairman of the Board of Commissioners for four consecutive years, to do the best work we could possibly do on behalf of the 214,000 citizens. Last but not least, I would like to just wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Holiday Season, and a Happy Safe New Year. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone in the viewing audience. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.